Well, better off down below because I got all the paper.
Let's see, one, two, three, four, and, okay. All right, we're gonna roll. Okay, it is seven oh four, at least I call the March tenth, twenty twenty-one. Going through appeals meeting to order. My name is Ed Stevens, Chairman. President of the sitting is on the phone is Floyd Jarvis, Vice Chairman. Uh, Tom Manning, the Secretary. Scott Rosado, we're the member. Doug Smith, alternate. Bill Bunzer, alternate. And I will have Bill sitting in tonight for Mr. Fitzgerald. Who is not present. Also present is Tom Zanarini, planner and Code Enforcement Officer for the Channel five. We have one item on the agenda this evening. At the appropriate time, I'll ask the Secretary to read the call. After that, he will determine if the mailings that are required are in order. At that point, we're set to proceed. First time anybody speaks, please identify yourself with the name and address. If you speak one of us, your name only is fine. The app will be getting ample opportunities to just, uh, tell the board what it is they are looking for. And at the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, the board members will have, uh, opportunity to ask the applicant any question that they may have. After that, we will ask if there's anybody present to, uh, speak in favor, oppose, any correspondence, and staff comments. At that point, the applicant is, uh, able to rebut any, if they may be to be negative comments. And, uh, at the end of the public hearing, we will go into a discussion and deliberation. At that point, anybody is welcome to remain, but they cannot speak. So once the public hearing is closed, uh, that stops all comments. If anybody has a barking dog, uh, if you put up some, they won't be annoying us. Uh, I think we're set to proceed. Tom Manning?
Okay. See, I'm just trying to position a light here. Second. Okay. So the call of the meeting is ZBA twenty-nine, six Casino Road, Little Gull Marine, Inc., applicant and owner. Variance is section eight point one dash four A one, eight point one dash four A two, eight point one dash four A three, and eight point one dash five A for interior landscape and parking requirement. Section eight point two point eleven to remove the sidewalk and curb requirement. And section eight point two dash B to remove driveway requirements. Section three point three dash one C to reduce the rear yard setback to thirteen point nine feet, where thirty feet is required. Section four point one to allow a residential use in the WW zoning district. And section six point one dash three to allow a residential use within the coastal resource setback. And coastal site plan review for the new marina with a second story apartment. Number two six one eight zero six two seven six six four two, and two six one eight zero six two seven five six three six. WW zoning district. Cam? Let's see, required. It doesn't say. Okay, for the record, the mailings have been reviewed. And they've been found to meet the requirements. And the mailing date was this twenty-six, I believe. Check. Mail was mailed on the February two one. So we're all set to proceed.
Okay, Mr. Ferris? I'm still here representing Little Gull Marine.
I just, uh, there's a couple of, um, folks that are, uh, with me tonight. Andrew Giblin, and Brad Baker, who's the, the owner of the property. And Andrew Giblin's, uh, kind of representing Little Gull Marine also as the owner's rep. So I don't know if, if they want to be, uh, added to the, to the screen at this point, or, or.
They're trying to get the presentation.
Yeah, Andy Giblin is added. They're gonna give part of the presentation, a brief kind of overview, uh, after I give kind of an introduction of what we're, we're trying to accomplish here. So I guess, um, I also will need to share my screen. That's. Can I go ahead and do that, Tom?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I can see Andy Giblin's on the screen.
Yeah, and I think Brad is also there too.
He appears to be muted.
Well, that's okay for now, I think.
Okay.
This is Andy Giblin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Oh. And I will, put myself, well, I'll, I'll wait till I'm called on and then I'll put myself on video, if that's okay.
That's fine. Greg?
Yeah, I'm just, uh, trying to get my screen sharing thing squared away here.
Okay.
Okay. Oh.
Did I hit that?
All right. Can we all see, uh, the site plan that's on the screen now?
I can.
Yes, okay, great. Again, my name's Greg Fetus with Fetus Engineering. We have an office at seventy Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Kind of right around the corner from this, this site. Um, and we're, uh, I guess extremely happy to be part of this. It's, I think it's a, it's probably one of my top two projects in the last ten years, uh, that I've worked on. And, and we're very proud to be part of this. Uh, but it's, it's, as you can see, uh, the cover sheet here, it's taking, uh, it's actually, it's the work, it's the working waterfront zone. And, and what we're trying to do is actually provide a use that is as traditional of a working waterfront as, as probably you could, you could write. It's gonna be a replica late twenty nineteen twenties boat, uh, wooden boat facility. That's going to, uh, repair, basically repair wooden boats, antique wooden boats. Uh, so I'm gonna go through, and, and again, I, I know what you read the variance list. It probably seems quite long. But we did kind of scour the zoning regulations to make sure we didn't miss anything because we didn't want to come back before you. So, and there's several determinations that were made by the zoning enforcement officer, which, I'm just gonna read briefly those, uh, that affect this. And because you're, you're gonna see, I'm gonna flip to the site plan here. Actually, this was, this was the existing, uh, conditions prior to the two structures being demolished. So that's the existing residential, about a thousand square foot, and another existing garage. Those are both on site. Uh, you can kind of see the existing dock configuration as well as the existing, what would be an old rail, uh, boat. You pull boats out on it. And again, the waterfront or the, the riprap and seawall configuration, configuration along the frontage. So one of the determinations is that Zero Casino, which is on the north side of Casino Road, and Six Casino, kind of were always you used in unison. There was always kind of boat storage and parking over on, on Zero. Uh, and then the buildings and so forth, and the, and the, and the use was, was on Six. The, the specific, the buildings as well as the, the waterfront. Uh, so we did get a determination from the zoning enforcement officer that that use would continue. And we can basically look at these two properties as one. Uh, you'll notice that the, the, the storage, Bill, I'm gonna blow this up just a little bit. You'll notice that the proposed storage shed, as well as the proposed boat shop, are both pretty close to Casino Road. They're eight feet and eight point five feet. And, uh, there was also determining, determination made that we could use front yard averaging. And that came out to, uh, Kevin Quinn, when he was here, came out with seven feet something. Uh, we redid the numbers and came up with just under eight feet. So that's why, uh, the, or seven point nine five feet is the actual setback for the front yard, which we meet both of those. So the, uh, let's see here. So the, there was a residential use on the property before, and, and that was never meant to be abandoned. It's still, uh, we'd always considered having that part of this development. And so, uh, Peter Zinglis did, did weigh in on that, and he said that it was, we can maintain that residential use. So that residential use was kind of more in the center of the site. Uh, we're proposing to actually put it inside the boat shop on the second floor. And we'll talk more about that because there are, we did ask for a couple of variances related to that. Uh, but we'll get into each variance separately. So, uh, what I'm gonna do is just put up, let me see. No, not that one yet, hold on a second. So this is a three D isometric or rendering of, of what we're proposing. Uh, the, to the far, this is, this is standing behind the railroad tracks and looking out to the Mystic Harbor Mystic River. Um, the storage building on the left side of the screen has basically four bay doors that slide. You could see the, the rail coming in, um, that could bring a boat into the facility. There's, so basically four boats can fit inside that storage building. Uh, it's not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you some kind of scale after we get through this. Uh, but then this is the covered work slip. So it actually has, you could bring a boat right inside, uh, from the water without, you know, basically there's water inside the, uh, in the, inside the covered work slip. So that could come in, you'd be able to work on it right without pulling it or without, uh, you know, having it, brought up the rail system. And then on the far right is the boat shop, which is, uh, two story, uh, for the majority of it, and I will show you the floor plans a little bit later. So they can work on some taller boats with, uh, old, the old wooden boats with keels and or, uh, high, uh, bridges. I'm not sure of all the terminology yet, but Andy Giblin, as well as Brian Burdick, can weigh in on, on some more of the details if necessary. Uh, so within this building, which is a water, water dependent building, but inside that, we, we kind of, uh, put a thousand square foot apartment in there to preserve the residential use. We are allowed by right to have an eight hundred square foot caretaker's cottage. But that had some restrictions we weren't necessarily comfortable with. And we just wanted to, since we had the residential use and we had the CEO weigh in on that, that we could preserve it, we decided to go that route. Let me just flip to. I'm trying to get one other perspective here, but the, the Zoom thing is making it challenging. Oh, there we go, all right. So this is a a view from the river. So you can see the covered work slip in the center here. You can basically pull a boat right into it. The storage building, which has the rail coming in, uh, which would allow a boat to be brought up, in a very less, or, it's not used anymore. It's one, it's super time consuming to bring boats in that way. Typically, you see travel lifts, but, uh, again, we're trying to replicate, uh, late twenties, uh, wooden boat facility. Wooden boat repair facility. Um, and you could see across, uh, on the other side of Casino is gonna be for some parking as well as boat storage, as well as maneuvering around the boats that'll be brought in on trailer, which would, uh, there'll be a need. And I'm gonna show you a turning radius exhibit that will show why some of the variances are, are necessary. So I'm gonna put up, and I'm gonna flip it over to Andy, just to give a quick little synopsis of who, who they are, who Little Gull is, and, uh, what they're trying to do here.
Hello, um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is, uh, my name is Andrew Giblin, Andy Giblin. I live at eighteen Williams Street in Noank. Uh, I'm here with Brian Burdick as well tonight. Uh, we appreciate the chance to try to convey to the board, as well as any of our neighbors from Little Point that are tuned in tonight, to, to try to describe what, what we hope to do, um, at Little Gull Marine on, on Casino Road. I thought I'd start by just, just describing a little bit what our current boat shop does. I've been in business with two other partners. We call ourselves MP and G, McLeod, Philbrick, Giblin. Uh, we started about thirty years ago restoring wooden sailboats, um, in a small horse barn in, in Stonington. Uh, actually right near the old Wilcox Marine Store, um, if anyone remembers that. Um, in two thousand, we built our present boat shop, which is on Flanders Road. Uh, it's on the site of Noank Marine Service. Uh, if you drive up, uh, from Route one to, to Whittles Cornfield, we're on the left. Uh, there's three big boat barns in there. And our shop, which is a separate entity, i- is right up by the road. We found ourselves specializing in the restoration of, uh, turn of the century to World War Two, uh, vintage racing sailing yachts. And although right now, what's interesting, we, is we have a motorboat in the shop, which is kind of different for us. But one thing these boats all seem to have in common is they were built by the same manufacturer, uh, the Harrisoff Manufacturing Company in Bristol, Rhode Island. Uh, they were the premier preeminent yacht builders in this country and probably the world during that time period, the eighteen hundreds to World War Two. Uh, best known for building a series of America's Cup Defenders at that site. Um, there's a, there's a museum there that celebrates that now. Um, our projects aren't maybe quite as, well, special as that, but the boats are, uh, loved by their owners, the ones that we work on, and they become rather collectible. Um, it can take us once and sometimes years to complete one of these projects. Um, and what we have found is that it's better to have a small, highly skilled workforce, um, to get through these very complicated, um, demanding projects. Um, when the boats are finished, uh, now we truck them via hydraulic trailer to, to Noank or Mystic to get launched. Uh, and some of the boats we now take care of for the owners. Um, that, some of these owners we've known for twenty-five or thirty years. Um, some of the boats come back to us, the small ones, for service, care, painting, varnishing. And some of the bigger boats stay at Mystic Shipyard. For boats that are just too big to go over the road. We never really thought we'd ever have the opportunity to have a waterfront facility, but teaming up with, uh, Little Gull Marine, um, what we want to do is take the work that we do up on Flanders Road and bring that to the waterfront in the boat shop building. And, uh, Greg, if you just want to show that, uh, that rendering. And it, so, so as far as, um, the waterfront gives us the opportunity to have dock space where we can bring the boats in, um, for commissioning and decommissioning. So, uh, along the dock there, we intend to, to, uh, get the boats ready for the spring. We do everything from putting the sails on, to setting up the interiors, to putting food in the lockers, uh, a mint on the pillow if required. In the fall, the boats come back and we take everything apart and start over again for the next year. Um, what we really hope Little Gull Marine will also be is a destination for some of our customers who, over the years, um, have become very fond of Mystic. So, um, we want Little Gull Marine to be part of Mystic, Mystic destination, uh, focused on the historic waterfront. Um, and we think we will complement Mystic, uh, in, in that respect. Um, the other things we, we hope to do on the waterfront is, um, some time to time, we have gatherings. We host, uh, an antique sailboat race, uh, in the summer. And we hope Little Gull Marine will, will become, uh, a venue for that. The other thing being on the water is gonna let us do, and Greg touched on this, is we'll be able to haul the boats ourselves for the first time. Most of the boats are hauled now with travel lifts, and people may be familiar with that, but it's a device that goes out over the water, drops straps in, and the boats drive in and are picked up. It's not ideal for wooden boats. Um, it doesn't offer a lot of support. Whereas a marine railway is just what it, it says. There's a car that goes down the rails underwater, the boat drives up on the car. The advantage is that it's supported the full length of the boat. Um, it's, as Greg mentioned, it's a very inefficient, slow way to haul a boat. But the wooden boats are really quite fragile out of the water. They're strong in the water to do their job in racing and sailing, but they require great care, skill in handling them out of the water. So, um, as the boat comes up the railway, we have the opportunity to sidetrack it, push it back into the storage building. The other option is to take it across the street where it may be loaded on a trailer, um, and headed to another destination. Um, and the other option is to put it to maneuver on the other side of the road, which, which Greg touched on. Some of these trailers are quite long and cumbersome. But we would maneuver the boats and put it in the boat shop for, uh, maintenance and storage. And I just briefly, the, the, the appearance of the buildings is very, very important to us. We, we have picked an aesthetic, as Greg mentioned, that represents a board yard, um, from the nineteen twenties to the nineteen thirties. But there's more than just the aesthetic to that. There, there is a functionality to these buildings. Wooden boats needs particular care, particular environments. And so the buildings have evolved over time to support that. As an example, that storage building, you'll notice the windows are way, are way up high. That's gonna offer a cold, damp, dark storage environment for the wooden boats. They don't want to dry out over time, um, just like the floors in your house. You don't want them cracking and moving around. It's, it's, uh, cumulatively kind of damaging to the boats. So we like cold, dark, and damp. Um, and interestingly, it's, it's exactly the opposite of what a fiberglass courtyard would want. They would want hot, dry, with lots of light. The covered work slip, as we move over to the south, um, offers that same kind of damp, dark environment, and we can shut the doors, keep the sun and the, and the wind off. And then the boat shop, as Greg mentioned, is, its shape is because of, that's, that's the kind of shape that devolved to work on wooden, uh, on boats tall and skinny, um, for the different height boats. So the buildings are gonna look very attractive in period, but there's a reason for them. There's actually a functionality because of the unique nature and use that we, that we propose here. I would like to ask if there's time, uh, if Brian Burdick could just speak to the details of that boat shop, because it's a very special building we had planned, and it's sort of the signature piece, um, of, of the, of the site. Would that be possible?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're gonna turn it to Brian, he's just gonna take my seat.
Good evening, I'm, uh, Brian Burdick from one eighty-one Prospect Hill Road in Noank. Our, our interest and, and our, our, our passion in, uh, classic wooden yacht restoration, maintenance, and repair is, has really been focused around the Harrisoff boats. Uh, the, certainly as Andy said, the world-class designs from the, uh, mid eighteen hundreds to the, uh, early part of the twentieth century. And in that light, we've, we've spent a lot of time trying to understand exactly how Harrisoff, that how Nathaniel Harrisoff, the father of the company, did, did his designs, specified the engineering details that are, are astounding by today's standards, let alone the standards of, uh, the nineteenth and twentieth century. So the building you see that's the boat shop is actually a building that still exists at the Harrisoff Marine Museum, uh, up in Bristol. It's, uh, it was originally the boiler shop for the Harrisoff Manufacturing Company, where they built the boilers for their steam yachts. Today, it's used as a workshop, uh, and a storage facility for the museum's boats. The design is from eighteen eighty-two. We have the copies of the original drawings, uh, right down to the, uh, the details for the structure inside. The, the window, we have the window drawings, the skylights that are along the north wall. Like Andy said, uh, the, the, the preference was for a north light, which would be, uh, even and, and not streaking. So there's skylights along the north wall. Uh, it has a bay that is about fifty feet long, uh, twenty-plus feet high. So we can get the deep keeled, uh, classic boats in the, in the thirty, forty-foot range, as well as the power boats that have the additional superstructure on them. It's, it's, it's truly the, the, uh, the program is committed to making sure that as we go forward, what we, what we put on the property will lend itself to, eye candy, if you will, uh, coming down, coming down, uh, West Mystic Avenue and, and looking across and seeing these classic, uh, early twentieth century, looks like the old Mystic River, like the old, uh, down in the Noank Harbor area. It absolutely that kind of, uh, of a presentation, but is also very functional for the unique requirements of maintaining the wooden yachts. So that's, that's our program there. Thank you.
Um, this is Greg Fetus again. I, I don't know if there's any kind of questions before I jump into the, to the variants, the variances that we're requesting and then, uh, going through those.
Uh, Scott Rosado, any questions?
No, it was a very comprehensive presentation.
Okay, Flo, any question, any questions at this point?
I, what? I don't have any questions.
Okay, Tom Manning?
Uh, I have a few questions, but I think it's probably pertinent just to wait until it's the end of the presentation of the variances, so I could ask the questions I have.
Okay, uh, Bill Munzer, any questions at this point? Oh, Bill Munzer? Is, uh, Tom Zanarini, is Bill on?
Uh, let me check. Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that, I muted myself, so, um, no, um, no questions at this time, thank you.
About Doug?
Just one question. I drove down there today just to orient myself to what, what was going on down there. And I believe this is the lot where there's, there's already been construction and there's, there's, uh, it's an empty lot now that's had a lot of excavation done to it, is that correct?
Other, uh, we are doing some of our DEP approved work along the seawall. That's getting replaced, all that's permitted through the state. Uh, there has not been any excavation. Uh, there was a bit of material that came out. There was a bit of material that came out of in the area of the covered work slip that was stockpiled on Zero Casino Road.
Yeah, okay, I just want to orient the lot because I wasn't sure whether it was, that was the one or the one next to it closer to West Mystic was what we're dealing with.
So it's, we're all the way here. Let me bring up the... As you drive from West Mystic or School Street down Casino, there's tidal wetlands on the left side and the right side. And then you'll come to Zero Casino and Six Casino. With Zero Casino has a little bit of stockpile of some sand. And then on the right, you'll see some equipment, a crane from Gwen Moore's and some other equipment, and they're actually putting in this cut stone wall retaining, or seawall, for lack of a better word. That's what they're working on now, which is all...
And you're northern of Butter is that resort?
Yes, Harborview Landing is to the, if you continue on Casino Road. Casino Road ends basically at the end of our property, and the driveway for Harborview Landing starts there.
Okay, yeah, that's just why I orient myself. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Greg, can you address the individual variances?
Yes, sir. So I'm going to leave this up because I think, and then I've got a couple of other exhibits and I also have the site plan. So I think I'll get through the variances with this exhibit, and then I'll kind of supplement it with the others. And I'm going to do it, I wrote a letter to Tom Zanarini. I'm not sure if it's in the file, but to kind of explain each of the eight variances that I thought, that we thought we needed. There was a ninth one added by staff. We don't think we need it, but we're going to ask for it anyway, just in case. So I'm going to go through my list here. So the first one is section 8.1-4.a.1, which is the front lot line. So basically, there's a landscape strip along Casino Road on both sides of Casino Road. That's supposed to be 10 feet of landscaping, separate of curb cuts. We're providing zero. We're not providing any landscaping along the front. And I do have an exhibit, and you can kind of see from here. We do need access for the four doors of the storage building. We need access for the covered work slip. We need access also for the boat shop and as well as across the street. And I'm going to put up, after I get through these, I'll put up one more exhibit that shows some of our truck maneuvering and why we can't really have any landscaping strips along here. And I think the other, I mean, it might be a technicality, but if we consider this all one curb cut on both sides, which is kind of what it is, we need access on both sides of buildings, into buildings, in between buildings. So that's the first one. Second variance is section 8.1-4.a.2, which is the front of the building. So it's actually the boat shop building where we have parking. So the the regulations want a five-foot landscape strip here and then a six-foot sidewalk, which that's another variance we're looking for. But we do need, and again, these are parking spaces that are required by zoning regs. I'm just going to flip to the site plan real quick here. We do have four spaces here with an accessible space because bathrooms and so forth are located inside the boat shop. And then we have six across the street and four basically to the northeast corner of the property. Of, as most boatyards, storage of boats and so forth don't really allow for the traditional dedicated parking spaces. I know my office is in the Mystic Shipyard, and I know they just moved a boat that they, I think, I guess they're either working on or putting in the water, and it opened up about six new parking spaces for my office. So depending on where the storage is and so forth, parking, people are going to park kind of where they can park. They know they have to move if for whatever reason a boat's getting shuffled around. But to push these four spaces 11 feet off the building would one put them all right in front of the covered work slip access as well as potentially having trouble getting access to them. So that's number two. It's five foot of landscape required between these parking spaces in the building. And again, we're providing zero. Section 8.5, 8.1-5.a. is interior parking lot landscaping. This isn't, again, a non-traditional parking arrangement. We need this area kind of wide open for access, and I will show that truck turning radius at the end. But we're, again, there's 10 square feet of interior landscaping parking per parking space required, and we're providing zero. It's not, again, not a traditional where you have parking, long rows of parking where you break it up with a landscape island. We just don't, the site is too small. We don't have that. The fourth variance is section 3.3-1.c., which is the minimum rear yard for non-water-dependent uses. And that's for the apartment that's within the boat shop. The zoning enforcement officer did make a statement that the boat shop is a water-dependent use, but a technicality might be that we have a residential use inside of there. So we did ask for that variance. Let me just blow that up just a little bit. And it's really just to the stairs that access the second floor here. It's 13.9. So if we had the ability to push that apartment back 30 feet off, we could do that by right, except it would be problematic for working on boats. We wouldn't have enough length here to work on a boat, so. And the other thing is, an 800-square-foot caretaker's cottage is allowed in the working waterfront district. However, that put a little restriction on who could stay in there and so forth. And we don't see this as, we don't see this facility as needing a full-time caretaker. So it really didn't, since we had the residential use, we decided that we would ask for this variance. 6.1-3 is variance number five. It's the coastal resource setback. So any water-dependent uses, this isn't required. However, the entire apartments within that 50-foot coastal resource setback. It's this line here. You can follow it with my mouse, and it basically cuts across over here. And it's basically 50 feet from the water and then 50 feet from the tidal wetlands. So again, we could have an 800-square-foot caretaker's apartment within there by right, and that would be considered a water-dependent use. The fact that we're calling it a 1,000-square-foot residential apartment is the only real difference. Variance number six is section 8.1-4.a.3, which is... So when you have parking in front of the building, you need to meet 8.211 and 8.1-4.a.2. We talked about 8.14.a.2, which is the five-foot-wide landscape along here. We don't have that. 8.211, and we're going to ask for that variance also. Basically wants a six-foot concrete sidewalk raised six inches off the ground, which, again, there's several reasons why we don't want that. We need access between the buildings here. It's not really, you wouldn't see that in 1928 or '29 at a facility like this. They just wouldn't have a concrete raised sidewalk. So we don't think it's, it makes sense, again, for this development. So that's, so variance number seven is 8.2.111 is pedestrian safety. They're worried, well, pedestrian safety talks about that five-foot landscape buffer and the six-foot sidewalk. So again, this facility does, it just doesn't, there's not a, there's not a direct walking path that you would be concerned about putting a sidewalk in front of these four parking spaces in order to create a safe a safe travel way for the pedestrians. This kind of facility is not going to have a lot of pedestrian traffic. The pedestrian traffics that's going to be onsite is going to be familiar with the boating industry. They're going to be their customers, potential customers, or workers. So they're all kind of familiar with what's going on at this facility. And again, that six-foot sidewalk, not appropriate for this development as well as would push those four parking spaces further into the site, further in front of the covered work slip. Variance number eight is 8.1, 8.2-12.b., which is a, it's a bit of a vague regulation that talks about entrance and exit driveways in all non-residential districts. Really only have, I mean, it is a bit of a gray area, but we're asking for a variance because I don't think we meet the intent of that regulation. It is going to be wide open from this, from basically the western end of Casino Road all the way to the eastern end. So they talk about a number of driveways and and being in unison with the Town of Bratton Public Works requirements and so forth. We have, we have run this kind of unique configuration by Public Works. They did not have any specific issues with it. It's kind of what's there now, this curb cut is not defined all along Zero. And it is a bit wide open on Six also. So and then the one variance that was asked for that actually wasn't on that list was 6.1-, oh, that's not it. Let me see here. Oh, section 4.1, which is allow a residential use in the WW zoning district. And we did, the staff did, did publish that, publish that variance request. And we're fine with getting it, but we did get a, the CEO did say that our use, the residential use was still valid because it was existing before and we never had the intention to abandon it. So those are the eight plus one variances. Again, it sounds like a lot. I think I'm just going to rack this up just a whisker. So what we did, because we think it's appropriate, there's tidal wetland. I'd probably say they were man-made. They run along the railroad tracks. There's almost a drainage ditch in the, to the north. We are proposing an additional five-foot-wide vegetated buffer. The trees you see there are basically perimeter parking requirement trees, which are every 50 feet deciduous trees. And those would extend basically on three sides of the property going all the way around. On the side of Harborview Landing, there's five or so additional trees we'd be planting as a buffer there, as well as a five-foot strip that would be vegetated along the back, additional vegetated buffer, as well as the street trees or deciduous trees. And then we kind of followed the tidal wetland to the west, added a couple of trees on the corner here, which would actually be in the tidal wetland. And we would get Mr. Snarsky, soil scientist slash wetland specialist, to spec a couple of trees that would thrive in that and make sense for that area. And then it continues across Casino Road to the south towards the Mystic River. And again, the area to the west, southwest is tidal wetlands, and we'd be adding an additional five-foot strip along there, vegetated. So I think that's one thing we're doing. I'm going to throw up the turning. So in the upper right-hand corner is basically the specs for the cab and the boat that we would be most likely using to move stuff around on site. I'll just blow this up a little bit. So you can see, and we didn't do every actual scenario, but we wanted to show that, you know, we need to back boats into the storage shed on the four doors. We do need, you know, small pickup access along the side here. We do need to get a trailer and boat kind of back into this area. There's potential for a dabit and crane that may be used in this area to move stuff around. Additionally, smaller vehicles to bring in stuff to the covered work slip. And you can kind of see how tight, if that parking did move back anymore, how it would be a little bit of a challenge to get into those doors of the covered work slip. And again, the main, you know, getting, getting in, maneuvering the trailer and then backing across into the covered, or the boat shop. And lastly is access down the, to the southwest of the boat shop. So, you know, you know, we kind of looked at some different scenarios of, hey, can we do planters? Can we do stuff that we move around? And at the end of the day, we probably could do that, but it's just not, we'd be moving it around so much, it would be in the wrong space that every time we had to move something. And we felt it wasn't necessarily appropriate, again, trying to replicate a 1920, 1930 facility. We are, and this was mentioned last night at the planning and zoning meeting, which I'm sure there's going to be something written. They did have no comment, which I guess is a good thing from the planning and zoning. But one thing they talked about was kind of supplementing that buffer around the perimeter of the facility, which we had planned on doing anyway. We would provide basically a land Which we had planned on doing anyway. We would provide basically a landscaping plan. Most likely, Mr. Snarsky, the Soil Scientist, well, and Specialist would be weighing in on, on some of those plantings. But to basically create a perimeter on the site, but kind of leave us to, to kind of get around on the interior of the site. And I think I think unless there's questions, I can there's a couple of things I just wanted to mention here. I'll just this was a the residential use request, and I'm just going to talk about that briefly. This was submitted with the, with the file, with the original application. But this is the nineteen, the nineteen thirties, this is our property. There was a large building basically right on, right on the seawall, actually a couple of large buildings. Early twentieth century. That was the Willow Point Casino, which I guess and Brian Burdick can weigh in at some point if there needs to be more description of this stuff. But then this, this second picture is this is the shipyard, Mystic Shipyard. So you can, and this is us in the back here. So you can see the scale. It's a much smaller facility. You know, we're going to end up having storage for four boats. Really, one, one boat to be worked on in the, in the boat shop and then one covered work slip. And again, Andrew Giblin mentioned these aren't projects that are, you know, you haul the boat, you're in there for a week and then you put it back in the water. These projects are months or years even, as he stated. So even though I showed you that, this isn't an everyday occurrence, but when we need to move something around, we just want to have it open. You know, it looks, it looks like a lot going on, but, but the amount of times this actually happens because there's only four boats in here. There's, there's a boat that may be in the boat shop for six months or a year. So it's not an everyday activity. But it's necessary to have, have it open. So this is, this is a blow up of this here. And you, but you can, so you can see kind of the scale of things, much smaller. And then there's just a little blurb here about the residential the res- the residential variance request, which I don't, I don't necessarily have to read, but it basically goes over exactly what I talked about. I didn't abandon, it didn't tend to abandon the residential use and the Z E O weighed in on it. It's inside that boat shop, so it's not gonna if, if the, if the variance wasn't granted, the boat shop building wouldn't change. It would probably switch to an eight hundred square foot caretaker's cottage, not what we would want, but so I, I think, because the caretakers is, is allowed. It just, it just, the only thing it does is reduce the ability for us to use it for a little bit. So instead of having a you know, if, if someone came in that's having work done on their boat and they need to stay somewhere for a couple of days, it would allow that person to, to do that. And then these are the same photos, but we're going to just talk, this is just a little blurb about the landscaping variance request. And just restricting you know, same stuff we, I talked about already, but just restricting movement. The truck and trailer combinations and how we need to get around onsite. And then I, I think talks about the perimeter. Think, you know, last night we did go before planning and zoning for, for a referral. And actually Diane Glombowski said it, maybe said it best, that when the regulations were put together, they didn't really foresee a true waterfront working development like this. And think about those landscape requirements and how, what, what effect they would have on something like this. So, you know, I, I guess no endorsement from them is an endorsement and we do appreciate the commission's time and efforts and, you know, we're here for questions. Clarifications. And Andrew Giblin and Brian Burdick are also available. I can unshare the screen. I can put anything back up that you'd like.
Uh, Greg?
I think that's it, unless I missed something.
Greg, part of the package which we have is the coastal site plan review. Could you just hit on the highlights? You don't have to read the whole thing.
Yes. So I'm going to go to the site plan. Let's see. So and I just read through it, the coastal, the, the application. You know, basically, this is going to be a very unique site where, where the only, what I would consider impervious is going to be the road Casino Road. Which isn't really part of our property and then the three buildings. Everything else is going to be either the, the perimeter landscaping, which again, I think is a, is a, is a buffer to the neighbors on both sides. It buffers an additional buffering for the tidal wetlands that basically are on two sides of us. But the parking area as well as all the area here, you kind of see hatched in like a, like a, like a stone hatch. That's all going to be pervious. It's going to be a, it's, it's going to be a, a special design that's basically every drop of water that lands and even on the roofs of the, of the buildings. I mean, there weren't gutters back then, so there, the drip edges are gonna, basically the water is going to drip off into this crushed, specially designed crushed stone accessway, parking area and maneuverability areas as well as across the street. It's all going to be, and we may, we may utilize a, like a crushed shell on top of it. But in no way is it going to be impervious. So unless we're inundated by several rainstorms in a row or, you know, we are at elevation five, so, you know, do we expect flooding once in a while? We probably do. But the design is going to be such that ninety-five percent of rainwater is going to get infiltrated into the ground and treated before it gets to tidal wetlands alongside the railroad tracks or tidal wetlands to the southwest. During construction, we'll have fill fence, all down gradient areas will have hay bales onsite in case we need additional crushed stone onsite in case we need anything additional to prevent any kind of erosion or sediment movement. What else? I think the only thing I didn't touch on was FEMA requirements. Again, I'm just going to blow this up just a little bit. So the FEMA line is, is here, there's a VE elevation thirteen as well as a VE elevation fourteen onsite. The, the VE thirteen is along the southwest property line. The VE fourteen runs along the, basically the waterfront. The only building that's within a VE zone is the covered work slip. That one, we really didn't have a choice. It had to be at the face of the wall. So basically all the walls on that will be breakaway as required. It'll be VE, VE construction or coastal hazard construction, FEMA compliant. There'll be flood venting. The balance of the buildings are within the AE zone. AE ten, I believe. We are at the, the, the floor of the boat shop is at five point five. And the storage shed is at five. So all those are allowed. The apartment is on the second floor, so that's above. All those are allowed because it's a water dependent use on a waterfront property. We're allowed to, to basically not skirt the issues of FEMA, but it's water dependent use that, that, that needs to be at that elevation. We, we, you know, to try to store something in a shed that's up at elevation eleven or twelve would be challenging. As well as getting a boat into a boat shop that elevation eleven. So, you know, that's, that's, that's it. I think we are consistent, very consistent with the you couldn't get a more of a waterfront use than this. And I think taking all the precautions, best management practices to protect the coastal resources, which are tidal wetlands to the north and west. The Mystic River to the south and east. Rocky shorefront, all of, all of the coastal resources. This is going to be I'd say almost a state of the art kind of facility with a state of the art stormwater management. And so I think we are consistent with the, the Coastal Area Management Act. Thank you.
If you, Greg, if you should just read, I don't remember, seven in the camera port, just for the record.
Oh, I can read it, sure. The project is consistent with the applicable coastal policies by developing the site with under twenty point six percent impervious coverage. Stormwater best management, best management practices, FEMA compliant building construction and erosion and sediment controls to manage erosion and sediment movement. Also, the site is a water dependent use on a waterfront, waterfront lot.
Thank you. That covers the camera port.
Yeah.
Okay, let's open up the questions. Jeff Smith.
Greg, one question on, on Casino Road, there are no curbs there now, correct?
That's correct.
So you, you're not making any change at all with that?
Well, I just, I didn't really touch on that. We are adding a flush curb, a concrete precast or cast in place concrete curb on both sides of the pavement in order to basically keep that road stable. There's going to be kind of vehicles crisscrossing it. And we don't want, you know, sometimes the edges of a road can get deteriorated and this will preserve that. And this, we've already run by, again, Public Works.
Okay. And I just have a comment here. I was on the zoning commission when we created the, the WW zone. So I'm, I share your enthusiasm for an opportunity to develop this parcel, which is one of the only WW zones parcels in Groton, I believe, at this point. To, to make it a water dependent use, so I, I applaud you for that. Second comment I have is most of the regulations that you're looking for variances from when we were discussing them, I know the zoning commission was thinking more in terms of office buildings, shopping centers and those kinds of things. And that was the reason for the requirements for landscaping in the, in the parking area and the sidewalks and curbs and everything else that's involved in those regulations. And I, and I agree with Diane when she told you that we did not contemplate something like this coming under those regulations at that time. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Bill Vonster.
Yes, Greg, when were those two lots configured? Zero Casino and Six Casino. Do you have any idea when that was done?
I, I don't. I can look at A- Andrew may have an idea or Brian. I can take a peek here.
Yeah, we, we honestly don't know. No, Andrew Giblin. Three fifties. Is it? Before Ziggy. This is, this is Andrew Giblin. Can you hear me?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we, the best we can offer is we do have some photographic evidence of, of that property. What we guess is the fifties showing activity, marine commercial activity on both sides of the road. That's, that's as far back as we, we know. The uses were adopted.
I think that that might be somewhat correct because one of the schedules that's attached in our packet is the Schedule A, which represents the test of a case. And that was in nineteen fifty-eight.
Well, that's helpful. And does the town still do they plow Casino Road?
I believe they do, but one of our neighbors is going to speak during public comment and I, he can address that. He'll, he'll know for sure. I believe they do because it's a town road.
So talk to us at a, at a higher level about the the hardship you're facing here. You, 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 you're trying to do this waterfront project and, and you're, you're trying to work around these specific zoning requirements. At a high level, could you make a summary statement as to what the hardship is that you're facing?
Well, I think it's probably the most, one of the most unique lots. I would say south of the railroad track, south of Route One, south of ninety-five. Where you have two parcels that were historically used as a water dependent use divided by Casino Road. They, they, you know, yes, I agree with the nineteen fifty-ish. I'm not sure, but the regs have been changed and updated several times since then. And this type of development in, on, on this unique parcel really wasn't not, not, I wouldn't say not thought through, but it, it's just such a unique use, such a unique development that the strict adherence to those regulations would, would, would make it very challenging. Nothing would really change with what we're proposing building wise. But all you would be doing was scattering some landscaping throughout that probably would not last very long. Put a sidewalk in that would create more hazard than not. I, I think that's the, the, kind of the big picture overview of, you know, the hardship.
Anything else, Bill?
This is, this is Andrew Giblin, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I might just expand a little bit on, on that question and Greg's, Greg's response, I, I guess I'd like to say that you know, to really be a working waterfront zone, these are the kinds of things that are typical and normal in the use of, of a zone like that or, or an activity that is the, the maneuvering, the ability to move around the site unimpeded. Is, is, I, I would suggest if we can't do that, that that is in itself a hardship that we wouldn't really be able to utilize this zone the way I believe what I understand panel is intended to, to be used for. So I think, talking about a hardship, I think we really honor I think we're really honoring or, or in the spirit of what the working waterfront zone was created for on this parcel. But then to be held by regulations that don't really mesh, um, as was alluded to earlier and last night. It doesn't really work for what the zone is supposed to do. And I think that's the hardship. It would be very difficult to do what we're trying to do. Adhering to those particular strict landscaping regulations. So I, I hope that helps a little bit.
Yes, thanks, Greg. Um, Mr. Chairman, no other questions at this time.
Okay, uh, Scott.
No, I have no.
Okay, Tom Manning.
Uh, I have a few, yes. Uh, the first one, uh, Greg, you mentioned that there were eight variances originally and you had one additional one. Did that one additional one, I get a little confused. Did that one additional one, was that, did I read that into the call? Because the call that I read was what was, uh, published in the paper. So if that was not part of what was in the call of the meeting that I read, then that could pose a problem.
No, we, we had originally asked for eight variances and, uh, Mister, and Tom can speak to this also. Uh, Tom Zanarini added the ninth one, and so it was published.
Yeah, okay. So Tom can answer, uh, that it was all part of the call. Okay.
This is Tom. Yes, it was.
Okay. Got a little nervous when we talked eight and then one more. Sure. Okay, the second question is, uh, and I think, um, the question that I think Bill raised was the history of Casino Road, was it an accepted town road? And it appears that it is and it was plowed and that hasn't been changed. Is that correct? I think it's correct, but I want to make sure that's the case because it seems like the plantings are one thing and, but pedestrian traffic and is a concern with sidewalk. And I know you probably aren't gonna have many pedestrians coming down. But I did make a site review because I had no clue. I had never been down in my forty years living in the area. I had never been on that Casino Road. So I took a ride down with my wife on Saturday, I think it was Saturday. And I wound up on your buddy's property and I met him. And I asked him where Zero and Six was because I had no clue. And he pointed it out to me and it turned out he was very gracious and kind of explained. And I was able to see all of the excavation and the stonework that was being done because it was very difficult to see it, what was going on just from the road. But anyway, the point I have and a concern I have is this truly is a working shipyard, but you have a, a unique situation in that you have a, uh, a town road passing right through it. And I wonder if anybody has talked about the possibility, and maybe this sounds off the wall, of relocating it to the periphery or having a sidewalk along the periphery. Or somehow to allow pedestrians to pass safely. And it doesn't have to be on a curb. It couldn't be, as long as it's identified as a walkway. Because you're gonna have people who go to this, uh, little resort at the far end of the street. They're gonna, I don't care what you try to, not gonna be taking cars across. They're gonna probably decide to, many of them are gonna walk down. Now, maybe it's not gonna be at a time during the hours of the operation of the shipyard. But I do have a concern about some way pedestrians traversing that and not getting run over by what goes on in a, in industrial area. So those are a couple of my questions. Could, has anybody even discussed relocating a sidewalk that would be along the periphery boundary? That would allow people to pass at least walking? Okay, that, those are my questions right now that come.
I think I can address the, the sidewalk issue. Um, I don't believe we're required to, to have a sidewalk on Casino Road. And, and, and I don't know if you can see it on this. The, the right of way is only twenty, twenty feet in width for Casino Road. So it's almost more like a, like a common driveway back to, uh, Harborview Landing. And you can see this is the existing edge of pavement. We are proposing to basically widen it from, from right of way line to right of way line. So there will be, it'll, it'll be a little bit wider than it is today. Uh, I, I think directing people through either around the perimeter, um, they're gonna walk straight down to Casino Road if that's what they choose to do. My office is down off of Essex Street at the shipyard. And I drive by here, I don't know, six times a day and, uh, all seasons, uh, there's just not a lot of pedestrian traffic, bike traffic or car traffic on this section of Casino Road. And I, you know, I, I, we did speak to the neighbor at Harborview Landing. Uh, he is, I don't, I think he's, he can probably talk better to, to how much pedestrian traffic comes out of his facility and, and goes up and down Casino Road. But again, there's, it's one, it's gonna be wider. Two, I don't, I think directing people kind of around and back over, they're probably not gonna take that route. They're just gonna walk straight down Casino Road if they're going to Harborview Landing. Um, and again, even though we showed that turning radius exhibit, you know, the amount of traffic at this facility is gonna be super minimal. Because there's just not that many, one, there's only storage for four boats. One, it takes half a day to get a, a boat out of, on the rail up and out. Uh, there's one covered work slip and one spot for a boat to be worked on in the boat shop. Um, so I, I, I am always concerned about pedestrian safety. Uh, but I think in this case, when we are moving boats in and around, there's somebody on the ground, you know, making sure, you know, flagging or, or making sure that, that, you know, it's just not a trailer driving around. There are people on the ground, uh, direct acting, stopping traffic, making sure, uh, that everything is safe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is Andrew Giblin. May, may I add on?
Yes, absolutely.
Regarding the sidewalks, uh, like I do want to reemphasize Greg touched on this, that, uh, the number of times that there's actual traffic from, uh, um, boyar traffic going back and forth across the road will be quite rare due to the nature of, of what we're gonna do there. As Greg said, the projects take so long. It's just that when we, when we do need to move and we, we need that unencumbered space. The other thing I, I just do want to mention from a functionality standpoint, that the boats on the trailers, um, really can't absorb any bumps and bangs over a, a curb drop, which could be quite damaging, um, a- as well. And also the trailers are very low to the ground and tend to get hung up on, on things that stick up, uh, what, like a curb or a curb cut or, or an edge. Um, and I just, I'm just speaking from a functional standpoint right now. So it's a, it's a technical matter, but I thought I ought to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Greg, I have one question. The apartment, uh, what is the access to the apartment? Just on the water side?
Uh, there's a set of, let me bring up, uh, let's see. Yeah, so this is the, uh, apartment. Um, so it's accessed by the set of stairs here. Uh, as well as there's a set of stairs inside the building that will bring you up, um, to a mezzanine that'll allow you access to the apartment.
So a tenant could walk in through the, uh, repair area without having to walk around the building, of course.
Yeah, they most likely won't walk through the repair area to get to it, but let me just, let me see if I can. Yeah, so Andy, does this door go directly to the apartment or?
See, I'm trying to see. Uh, no. It says Brian Waterwood. I think, I think that was one of the scenarios, um, to have a door to go into a, to an up, to a hallway stairway is, was one of the possibilities, a separate hallway. Um, so that, um, you could access from an enclosed hallway is, is one of the possibilities there. But the, 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 I think the usual route would be the, the, the waterfront stairway that you've got your cursor over.
Yeah.
Right there. I think that would be the typical route that, uh, would be used for that apartment.
So they would, they would walk down the, uh, on the south side where, where there's no vehicle traffic?
Correct. They, that's correct. They, they, that would be open to walk around the south side.
Okay, alright.
And I, I did want to expand a little because I think it's kind of, I'm sorry, um, Andrew Giblin. Um, the, as Greg talked about the surface of the, of the site, um, we also hope to have a crushed shell and stone mix. Um, so that someone could potentially drive down that south side if it was rainy or, or clement and park just, just for a short term to get up into the apartment. So, um, that's, that's able to get someone or pick someone up that needed to get picked up. So they wouldn't have to walk the whole length.
Well, where would the tenant normally park?
Well, they would, we would expect they would probably park in one of those spots in front of the, uh, the, the covered work slip area there. That's what we would expect. But I, I guess what I'm trying to say in the event that it needed to happen and someone didn't want to make that long walk for some reason, they could be picked up, um, on that eastern, uh, storefront.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have. Um, okay. Uh, is there anybody here to speak in favor of the board granting these variances?
Give me a second. Um, yes, there are many participants here.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna allow Mary Kate to talk. She has her hand up.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Mary, um, Catherine Mason. I live at one ten School Street. You can actually see my property on the map that is, um, on screen right now. And I do want to speak in support of the development. We've had, um, conversations with Mr. Fetus and he's explained the, um, the development to us. We're very excited about um, improvements to the, um, lot that abuts our property. Um, and think it will be an asset to the neighborhood. I do, um, want to make sure that I am clear that I've also spoken to Mr. Fetus about the flooding that periodically takes place on Casino Road. And he has assured me that this project will not increase flooding on our, um, on Casino Road because the flooding does impact us on one ten School Street. The swale that the town recently put in place has been, um, has made a significant improvement. But we are concerned that any grading that happens on Casino Road, we can to account flooding that may impact our property. So Mr. Fetus has ensured, has assured us that that will be the case.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything else?
Yes, I'm gonna allow Matt McCormick to speak. He has his hand up. And if anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Uh, Mr. McCormick. Mr. McCormick.
He hasn't unmuted yet. Mr. McCormick, can you unmute?
I, my apologies. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Alright, good afternoon, everyone. So I wrote a letter. I sent it to Tom and, uh, I share uh, Mary Kate's feelings about this project. Uh, for selfish reasons, I'm incredibly excited that we have such a good, uh, a good neighbor and a good team of people that are putting this project together very diligently. And the thought of having something that looks like Mystic Seaport, you know, directly, uh, next to, to Harborview Landing, I think is exciting and, and, uh, I'm in full support of, uh, of this endeavor.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Tom Zanarini, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to address two people that called in. I'm gonna, uh, unmute them and ask them directly if they have any questions because they can't unmute themselves. So this one is, uh, the last four numbers are one, five, four, one. Do you have anything to say? I'll take that as a note.
Okay. The other, the other one.
Okay, and one more. Uh, the last four numbers are six, four, eight, nine. Number six, four, eight, nine. Do you have anything to add?
I guess we think that is no comment?
Okay, nothing there. And, um, Greg, if you could unshare your screen, please. I'd like to share mine.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of documents, um, that I presented to the board. Here is the one letter from Stephen Jones, March third. Uh, to whom this may concern, this letter is to urge you to approve the Little Gold Marine Incorporated application. As a budding neighbors, we at West Mystic Wooden Bootyard are delighted with their proposal. And let me go to one more. Harborview Landing, this is from Matt McCormick. He just spoke. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So purpose of this letter is to show my support for Little Gold Marine Incorporated. The variances seem acceptable to me in the nature of this project. The use of a working waterfront marine should be taken into consideration as it pertains to these variances. Furthermore, Casino Road has seen sus- susceptible investments over the last couple of years and we are blessed that everyone seems to be working well together to add value to the town of Groton. Please let me know if I can help in any other way in this endeavor. Sincerely, Matt McCormick, founder, Harborview Landing. And then I have a memorandum from Deborah Jones, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. The subject is this application, ZBA twenty dash nine, zero nine. It's from the planning, uh, at the meeting on March ninth, twenty twenty-one. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the referral listed above and had no comment.
Okay. Do any board members have any final questions? Tom Manning, Scott, Bill?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. Alright, does anybody else have anything to say? If not, we will close the public hearing at eight thirty-four. Thank you all. Okay, let's push to, uh, discussions. Start off with you, Scott.
Well, I, I, everything, everything's been sad, I think, and it, uh, seems like a very positive, um, development and, but from, but from the various point of view, which is more of our consideration. I think that, that what was indicated that the WW zoning did not anticipate something like this. Um, whether that's unusual or not, and because they didn't, they implemented regulations that would affect different types of activities. So from that, from that point of view, I think, uh, I'm very supportive of the request.
Okay, Mr. Answer.
I think that's all well said. Uh, yes, a very good project. I, I certainly, uh, endorse the, uh, want to support the application.
Okay, uh, Forest Province. Okay, Florence Province. Floyd? Can we unmute Floyd?
Floyd, you're muted.
As myself personally, I think everything has already been said. Floyd must be taking a nap, so what we need is vote.
Wait a minute. Hey, Ed, you didn't ask me.
Oh, Tom Manny.
Yeah.
I wondered if you were awake. Okay. Yes, I have to.
For you to, okay. Obviously, this is a unique situation. The design and the concept in bringing back existed, but in a different, probably a different layout. The, the one thing I have a real problem with is the sidewalk. And I totally understand the the concept of a sidewalk that we see was curved up and 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 I totally understand that these boats that are being hauled in and out can't traverse curvings and that type of thing. But I'll tell you, this is a town road. And I see it, I live off of Little Gull, Fish Town Lane, road rather, and there's no sidewalks between Little Gull and Fish Town Lane and the bottom of to Noank Road. And I've seen very close calls, much tragic, almost tragic results of people getting struck, joggers and things. Now, totally, this is a different location, different under, different type of situation with Casino Road. But I think somebody thinking out of the box, there's going to be, you know, pedestrian traffic, no matter what we think, 50 years from now. A lot of people are moving into this area or coming to visit, and people are out walking around. And maybe that's not going to have an impact, but to have, I'm, I'm envisioning somebody getting creative and maybe laying a, you know, just a concrete walkway flush with the road that is designated as a pedestrian walkway to funnel people free and onto this so that nobody, no tragedies are going to occur. You know, we all expect that there's not going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic in this. But I'm sure that the, the little business that's abutting this location is going to have pedestrians coming out of there. Maybe there's not going to be hundreds. It's probably only going to be 10 or 20 or five, who knows? But there should be, and maybe it's not required by the zoning regs or to the concept that I'm looking at, but some way to funnel the pedestrians safely off the road onto a walkway that runs beside the road. Doesn't have to be elevated in my mind, and maybe that's thinking, maybe they have to get a variance for that. But not to recognize that there is going to be people walking around that don't know where they're going. I think something has to be at least accommodated for that situation. So I'm in favor of this, with the exception of not acknowledging a walkway or a pedestrian or sidewalk of some type that may not be the conventional sidewalk that we're thinking of today. So that's, that's what I've had to say.
Good, thank you, Tom. Love your response to that. They were just in planning and zoning last night, and they're the agency that would require something like that, and they did not. We don't have it within our purview to require anything like that. Now, having said, having said that, I think Mr. Fetus and Mr. Giblin, Mr. Burke have heard your concerns. And if there's some way that they can, maybe they can paint the roadway with hash lines. I don't know, but we can't require them.
This is Tom Zanory. I I can add that since the sidewalks were brought up, that the sidewalk map, the official sidewalk map for the town, this is, this road is is not listed as proposed sidewalks, so there's never been any consideration for sidewalks on this road.
Yeah, and the other thing I mentioned, Charlie, if you go onto School Street and every other street in Royal Point, especially with all the traffic going to the Mystic Shipyard, there are no sidewalks anywhere on Royal Point. So the minimal amount of traffic that this site is going to in, what's the word I'm thinking of? This, got tracked. And even Mr. McCormick's abutting site, there's only five of them cottages there. So there are going to be, you know, so I think that they heard you and for them to make a decision. Tom Zanory? Oh, do you want to say something? Okay.
No.
So, did you want to say something? Okay. Alright, so I think the general consensus that all of the variances are acceptable to the members. So we're only taking it individually. So if some of it, they
Yeah, I, I take into, let's go back a little bit and talk about sidewalks. My understanding however, there are a lot of, now, if you drive through Groton today, one of the problems that I see, you go up, say, Noank Road, you go up, there's so many areas where there aren't sidewalks. However, if a developer or somebody comes in and puts a home in, they're, I think, required to include putting a sidewalk in, even if it goes nowhere but across the front of their property. All I'm saying is, is that, and and I would be against voting for the sidewalk just on the principle that I think my own mind, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, but I am adamant that there should be something that accounts for people traversing that road from one end to the other. That doesn't, that this is a walk. Maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but I've seen so many people come close to getting hit on Fish Town Road, joggers, bikers, and and neighbors that have come close to getting, trying to get their mail out of a mailbox. No sidewalks at this end of this area, and it's a very dangerous situation. I'm not saying that there's any comparison to what this Casino Road is. But I think it would be remiss on my part not to raise the issue that I think the develop, the designer, the architect could figure out some way to traverse people from one end to the other without but I am not in favor of the sidewalk. So I just, I don't want to be a pain in the rear end, but I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Tom, the sidewalk is, our variance request is not for the street. It's on the side of the building where the parking spaces are. That's the sidewalk variance that they're requesting. Nothing to do with the street.
But has nothing to do with the streets?
Absolutely not.
Well.
There's, there was a, they, oh, I can't, sorry, public hearing is closed. But if you look at the exhibits, there was a sidewalk proposed alongside of that long, narrow building on the south side.
Okay, so talking apples and oranges relative to sidewalks. Hopefully, the, the folks will at least take into consideration my comments relative to that. Because, you know, we can't project, we we can conceive that's not going to be heavily populated with pedestrians. But I wouldn't want to see somebody accidentally get hurt.
Okay. Alright, Tom, thank you.
That point clear then. I thought that was in.
Okay, so with that having been said, would somebody care to make a motion to approve the variances?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variances, plural, as requested.
Is there a second?
Second up.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Any other discussion? Okay. I guess it's going to be a fourth person vote because I don't think Floyd is is on really.
There are five.
I'm sorry?
You still have five. You have Doug, Scott, Bill, yourself, and Tom.
Yeah, but I had not seated Doug because we had Floyd here, but I will seat Doug for the vote. Thank you, Mr. Crawford's place. Doug, you get that?
Yep, I'm here.
Alright, so you will be voting. Alright.
Ed, can't somebody call, call Floyd?
He's on the phone. That's the problem. He's on the phone.
Let me give it a second. Let me put you on hold and I'll try his, his other contact number.
Yeah, I don't think we won't want to just.
Bill Bonsor, I see you closing your eyes.
I, I think, I thought Scott closed his eyes for a minute, but he probably gets up at 4:00 AM. I'm still with us.
Okay.
Okay, this is Tom. He did not pick up.
Okay. Alright, so Dr. Smith? Are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, so you will be voting. You'll be the fifth in a row. Okay, so any other discussion? All those in favor of granting the variances as requested, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Variances are unanimously granted. Now, we have one other piece of business, and that's the CAM report. So there needs to be a motion to accept the CAM report. Well, I have a one that we've always used on the CAM applications. I emailed Tom.
Make a motion, Ed, to approve the CAM as model because it is consistent with the applicable coastal policies and includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
That was Scott that seconded.
Yes, it was. I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That carries unanimously. The CAM report has been accepted. Okay, so that takes here the public hearing and the
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Remit.
Yes, sir.
Good luck with it, Greg.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got to move on to correspondence. Tom Zanory?
We have no new correspondence.
Floyd, you're back with us.
I, I've been on there.
No. We'll holler at you.
I voted yes.
Okay, so I have six votes. Okay, that's the minister's deal. Okay, time for correspondence?
There is no correspondence.
It says approval of the minutes, but there were none with the package.
Okay, they'll be coming next.
We'll pass on that. Old business?
Uh, no old business.
How about new? New apps?
There are no new apps, but we did, I spoke before the meeting and saying we did hire a new administrative assistant. Her name is Debbie Schoffler, and she is on the phone call or on Zoom here listening. So next meeting, she should be in attendance.
Welcome, Debbie.
Hi, Debbie.
Bye.
We don't bite. Okay, and staff report, that was it?
Yep, there is no staff report.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Bill Bonsor, thank you. Second?
Second.
Oh, Floyd, thank you very much. All in favor?
I wanted to say something after listening to you guys all night.
All, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that ends the meeting at 8:49. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Stay safe. Have a good night.
Night.